Good evening, welcome to the special session of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City Schools Board of Education. I am presiding in Jim Posh's stead because he is still in San Francisco. And for the first, um, beginning proceedings, Mr. Gaynor, will you please call the board?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh. Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Um, next, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion, we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
Any discussion of the consent agenda? Nope. Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Uh, next, we have a separate item, uh, personnel item separate from the consent agenda, which is the approval of contract of employment for Alyssa Lawson McKinney from interim high school principal and, no, I'm sorry, for interim high school principal and assistant high school principal. So that's a two-year contract, first year as interim high school principal, second year as assistant high school principal.
Do you want me to give a little context?
Yes.
Okay, please. So, we have been engaged in a search for a new administrative principal for the high school. Um, we did conduct a nationwide search. Uh, we have, um, interviewed some candidates, um, but the committee was not, um, sold strongly on any of the candidates at this point enough to present them to the Board of Education for that position. So, Dr. McKinney, who is a seasoned and experienced principal, she's a former small schools principal. She's been an administrator, uh, in the district for eight years, has, um, agreed to serve as the interim administrative principal for next year. That will allow us additional time to conduct the search, um, an even more comprehensive search, while maintaining, uh, leadership stability in the high school, given her experience, uh, working here with our staff and our students. The reason that, um, we have the two-year piece is, uh, she's, we want to make sure that she's not giving up her assistant principal role, but she has an opportunity, um, after next year, uh, to return to that position, which is why, um, you see that there. And that was, um, a part of our, uh, discussion with EAPSC, um, so we wanted to make sure that that was very clear.
Okay, and she wants to return to her current job after that one year of interim?
Correct.
Okay, terrific. Um, do I have a motion to approve this contract of employment for Alyssa Lawson McKinney?
It's a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, um, first of all, thank you to her for accepting the, um, uh, interim position and also thank you to the committee, the search committee, um, for, for insisting on doing this well and instead of doing it quickly. It's a critical role and I appreciate their measured approach.
I also think that as we return next school year back in person, having a familiar face in that role will be helpful for our students. And, and really we need to do everything we can to ease them back. Any other comments? Mr. Gaynor?
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Can we get a little more volume on Malia?
Is this better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, we have financial reports and...
Well, those were, those are all, uh, part of the consent, and so you write down to the...
Those were part of the consent agenda, okay, let me move down then. Is it time for the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone, again. Uh, we have several items today in the, in the superintendent's report section of the meeting. I'm going to first turn it over to, uh, Dr. Lombardo, who's going to take us through our third reading, um, of the policy on blended learning.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me clearly? Excellent. Um, this is the third reading of policy 2370.01 blended learning. You may recall, the first me, reading was June 15th, the second reading was June 22nd. And, uh, being June 29th, this is the third and final reading where I would ask for board action on the policy and be happy to answer any, uh, questions at this time as well.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Dr. Lombardo, I just had a question in that I know when you brought this to us originally, you said that there were some things in the legislature that were still, um, being discussed and that there might be further changes to this policy. I just wanted an update on whether or not that's still the case or have those items been ironed out and we think that this is, you know, we ask, we're, you know, we're going to vote on this tonight, but do we anticipate there might be additional changes between now and the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, great question. Uh, things haven't changed since the last time we talked about that piece. Um, very well could be some changes coming forward, but there hasn't been any final decisions made yet.
Thank you.
So if there's no further discussion, um, may I have a motion to accept policy 2370.01 blended learning?
I motion, we accept the blended learning policy.
I second.
Mr. Gaynor?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
The next item that we have is a formal presentation of the model for virtual learning for the, uh, 2022 academic year. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Felicia Gould to, uh, share that recommendation with the board.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Wonderful. Thank you Superintendent Kirby and to our board members. I will share my screen here. Our online learning task force, um, took the opportunity to, um, look at an online platform for the upcoming school year. Uh, we know that during the pandemic, we had many of our students who did well in our online platform, as well as we had, uh, parents and families who, uh, wanted an online platform for their students. As we take the opportunity to look at our strategic plan and we think about online learning, it encompasses all five strategic plan goals. I can't see this. Are you not able to see my screen? Okay. Can you see the screen now? As we think about our strategic plan and online learning platform, it encompasses all five of our goal areas. When we look at the online platform, we want to, uh, talk about student outcomes, the educational approach, uh, for that. We want to involve our parents and community. We definitely need, uh, valued professionals and we need operational resources in order to have that take place. For our online task force, it was comprised of teachers, administrators, support staff. It was facilitated by Dr. Brian Williams and we wanted Dr. Brian Williams to facilitate this online learning task force, uh, seemingly that he has been involved with the options program, uh, for several, uh, years. And it was supported by myself and, uh, Mr. Bob Swaggart, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, to help support, uh, the online, uh, professionals. We also wanted to make sure that we had, uh, members on our task force who had been involved in our Ohio online, uh, platform that took place during, uh, our pandemic, as well as those, uh, staff members who also expressed an interest. We met three times over, uh, the course of the school year. We started in May and we had two meetings in June. And these were the goals for the online learning task force. It, we took the opportunity to truly examine the best practices that had occurred, uh, during the remote learning in order for us to be able to create what we will call a Tiger Virtual Academy. Uh, during that time, we, uh, did research, uh, we looked at, uh, different platforms with other online schools. Uh, we looked at what the staffing and, uh, needed resources would be. We talked about what the communication would be for the Tiger, uh, Virtual Academy and how we would approach our recommendations, uh, to the superintendent, as well as how we would promote and, uh, look at recruiting processes for the upcoming school year. So for the online, uh, learning task force, um, want to share some recommendations, uh, from that task force. Uh, for the Tiger Virtual Academy for the upcoming school year, we want to look at using two online learning providers, Ohio Online and Edge Anuity. Ohio Online, which is known as the Lincoln Learning, will be used for grades K through five and the Edge Anuity for grades six through 12. Students participating in the Tiger Virtual Academy will work at their own pace. In regards to the staffing requirements, um, this will follow the board policy that was just adopted, uh, by our board, uh, 2370 for blended learning, where we will look at no more than one, uh, one teacher for every 125 students. Students who want to participate in AP courses will have that opportunity and that will be provided in person or through Edge Anuity. For students with disabilities, uh, wanting to access the online platform, we would require a consultation with the families and an intervention specialist and the principal. And the reason that we're making this recommendation and we want to look at this on a case by case because we want to make sure that the platform actually matches the goals that are outlined in the student's, uh, IEP. Students participating in the teacher, uh, in the, uh, Tiger Virtual Academy will be required to participate in person for all state assessments because they are still considered, uh, our students and so they still must, uh, participate in all state assessments. Students, uh, also will have the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities and these will have to take pa, place in person as well. An orientation will be held for all of our families and students who want to participate. We will begin creating a K-12 planning guide for all our families and students. In this planning guide, it will have the information that will outline grade level expectation, course requirements, as well as graduation requirements, so that students and families can see how to progress, uh, with, uh, the, uh, online learning. And also the information, uh, in regards to the Tiger Virtual Academy registration and any advertisements will be shared after, uh, our board approves and all of these items should be available in July. And this concludes the recommendations for, um, the online task force. Are there any questions?
I've got a, a couple of questions, if I may. I know that we have in our, um, CBA some restrictions in terms of the number of students, uh, who are taught online. Are we expecting that we will have to, uh, go through a MOU process with 795 in order to achieve this? Or is there a structure already in place for us to, to do this?
I'm gonna let Dr. Lombardo and Mr. Swaggart, um, share information on that.
Sure, I'll be happy to answer that question. As long as we're using our teachers, um, that shouldn't be a problem with the 125. Um, if we do use an outside, um, source or an outside, um, company, we don't use our teachers, then we will have to, uh, negotiate, um, if we do have more than 50 students. But we're trying to utilize our own teachers for this as much as possible.
Our, so you're saying our teachers will be the teacher of record overseeing the implementation of Edge Anuity and, uh, is it, uh, Edge Elastic? Lincoln Learning?
Yes, that was the recommendation from the, uh, committee that we, um, staffed this with our, our staff.
Great. Um, and then the, uh, the ratio, the one to 125, um, I'm assuming, so please correct me if I, if I'm mistaken, I'm assuming that that is per class. So I, as a, as a eighth grade American history teacher, I will, I would have 125 students for whom I'm responsible for their, um, American history. And so that's what I'm thinking this means. What I want to clarify that it hopefully doesn't mean is that for each 125 students, there is one teacher. Period.
A little different when you think about it from a grade level perspective because, uh, elementary teacher is a generalist, so they could have 125 students, which would cover all of the content areas. And then you think about, uh, like you said, a person who has, um, a content area, then you would be looking at 125 students when you think about courses. So it looks a little different.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be watching that. I think, um, I'm, I'm really not comfortable about having, such a large student-to-teacher ratio. It, it worries me, I'll be honest.
Well, I can say when we did the Ohio online learning, that we did not, um, exceed anything like 125. Our, our staff members did not have, um, that, those type of numbers at all.
Well, ratios, yeah, we just use the, um, the boundary that the state provides in the policy.
Right. And I appreciate it, that it's an, it's an outside number, not, not a, an inside number. One final piece is, um, actually two. Um, I hope that when we do the, um, the, uh, sort of the family information nights, if you will, about this, that there will be, uh, both an in-person and online version, because these may be families that are, that are not comfortable. That's why they, they're interested in this. So I think we have to have a virtual, uh, you know, information night as well, just to meet those families where they are. And, um, then I also just wanted to point out that in terms of the, uh, high school program, you know, we came to, um, the, um, Edge Anuity platform after a really significant, long-term, um, comparative pilot program that took place, um, at the Delisle Center in about 2019. They piloted a number of different platforms and, um, they came to, uh, sort of agreement that for our purposes, um, the Edge Anuity was the best, uh, platform to go with. I remember the discussion, um, I sort of crashed a meeting of theirs. And I remember there was a really long discussion about Edge Anuity being a good platform because it was more adjustable by the classroom teacher, that teacher of record. Some of these platforms are difficult, um, because, uh, teachers cannot insert and, and remove modules of instruction, um, but Edge Anuity does allow that. And that's a really, really important piece that, um, that they, uh, was very convincing to them at the time in about 2019 that, that made this a really important piece. And then I will also just share that actually as a result of that comparative piloting program, my colleagues in Sharden were looking for a platform to use and, um, I encouraged them to get in touch with, um, Dr. Williams over at Delisle and they visited and so we did a great, um, sort of collegial sharing of, of, um, experiences that I just think is a wonderful collaborative experience and, and I can tell you Sharden benefited from that, uh, that pilot as well.
Thank you.
Part two regarding the, um, the Virtual Academy. And the Virtual Academy will be assigned according to the, uh, students' needs, is that correct?
It will be assigned according to their grade level and the courses that they're required to take.
Okay.
I just want to clarify one thing, because, um, you mentioned it in the presentation and I think it was bullet one, two, three, four on slide five and you talk about advanced placement courses will be provided in person or through Edge Anuity. Um, I just want to make sure we're not doing concurrent teaching, that that will either be 100% virtual, that AP class, and taught by somebody, or it will be through Edge Anuity, but not, we're not going to ask our staff to do concurrent teaching.
No, there is no concurrent teaching.
Thank you.
I have one last question, um, taking from what Dan spoke about, the... I have one last question, taking from what Dan spoke about the flexibility for teachers to add or subtract modules. Do we know whether during the past school year, real-life use was successful for the teachers? Did you get feedback from teachers about Edge Annuity and their ability to modify it as needed?
The high school did pilot that this year where they had the opportunity for staff members to work with students and those content standards that students did not master, those students had the opportunity to rework those standards using Edge Annuity.
Okay.
We did take content out of the Lincoln Learning platform. We did exclude some content. This was our first time through that content and so we were getting feedback from parents and students and teachers. And when we found that something wasn't up to par with what we wanted to be included, we would exclude that. So, you know, much of what Mr. Heinz was talking about, about that customization, can continue to happen even with our Lincoln Learning piece at the K-5 level. And again, our partners with Ohio Online through the ESC are also very responsive when we give them feedback and are willing to work with us to customize that curriculum.
It's good to hear that our teachers retain, you know, control over the curriculum with the online platforms. That's great, thank you. Any other thoughts or questions?
Is this something that you're asking us to adopt, vote on, or just informing us about?
We'd like for you to vote on it because we want to start sending out the information to parents and that would be in line with the precedence of how we've been handling all of our pandemic decision-making.
So we need to vote to accept these recommendations?
For Tiger Virtual Academy, please.
So I would like to motion that we accept the online learning platform as described in this evening's meeting.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Mr. Gaynor?
One second.
You have to add it in?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Could I just ask that when we do have the information nights, that we be informed of when and where?
Yes.
Because that's something that I know that we will want to eavesdrop on.
Yes.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. We're ready for the vote.
Yes, we're ready for the vote.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
We just want board docs to be as customizable as Edge Annuity and Lincoln. Okay. Next up is all you, Mr. Gaynor.
It is. Okay, thank you. We're gonna roll into a budget presentation here. I'm gonna try to share my screen. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so tonight we're gonna do a budget presentation. So first, I want to thank the board for having the meeting tonight so close to the fiscal year end. I know you've had a lot of meetings this month, so this was a great help in us trying to get everything done that we needed to get done because certainly the last few weeks and then the next couple of weeks are very, very busy with us trying to close out the last fiscal year and get the new fiscal year started July 1st. So, thank you again for having the meeting tonight. Also want to thank the finance team. I'm joined tonight by Eric Soltes, who's our Assistant Treasurer. So he's been doing a ton of work here to get all of this together and these documents prepared for you. But even, you know, all the folks in the finance department, again, busy time trying to make sure that everything is done the way it needs to be done, so I just want to thank them for all of that hard work. We'll roll right into the strategic plan, as you can see, so everything, again, we always try to tie back to the strategic plan, so we're currently working here Goal 5 and really just making sure that we have the resources that we need for student achievement and also trying to be transparent and making sure that we communicate how we're spending our resources for both you and for the community. Just a quick overview of what we're gonna talk about here tonight, you know, we have a few introductory remarks. Eric is going to go through the budget process and also the budget document that you have a paper copy in front of you and is also attached to board docs. We're gonna tie all that to the five-year forecast and then finally, we're gonna ask for your approval of the appropriations for the next school year. So as a quick introduction, just a couple of definitions for you, you know, we talk about budget, we talk about appropriations, we use them interchangeably, but really appropriations, that's the legal authority to spend. So that's what we ask you to approve. That means if a general fund appropriation is $120 million, we can spend up to $120 million. The budget, when we refer to that, is really all the underlying stuff that rolls up into that $120 million. And it's really interesting when you think, you know, 80, so 75 to 80% of your budget is staff, you know, staff and, you know, either salaries, salaries and benefits. You've already been approving, you know, staff, we've approved the contracts, so really the majority of the budget for next year is already set. So all of this that we're doing right now and all the time we're spending is really on that remaining 20 to 25% of the budget and it's, you know, materials and supplies and professional development and all the other things that buildings need and the district needs. That is just a very, very time-consuming process, but also it's the thing that the auditors look at to make sure everything is coded properly. They want to, you know, they don't care whether it's $100,000 miscoding or $100 miscoding, they get a little cranky either way. So we spend a lot of time trying to make sure that everything is coded the way it needs to be coded. The state actually puts out what's called the USAS, the Uniform School Accounting System. So it's a whole manual that has all of the various dimensions of the account code. We don't want to get into that and bore everyone, but just know that there's, it's hierarchical and, you know, when we show you the fund, which is what you approved at, underneath the fund, you're gonna have a cost center and you might have a function which would say whether something's an instructional cost or whether it's an operations cost. And then, you know, that can go down to three or four digits depending on how much detail you want to track. And then underneath that, you're gonna have an object that might say, and it's a supply versus professional development. And then underneath that, you could have an instructional level and a subject and, you know, even, trying to think what else falls in there. But there are all these various dimensions of the account code and really what we do on an annual basis is try to assess what makes the most sense. It's kind of almost a cost-benefit analysis. You try to figure out, okay, what level of detail do we want to track these expenditures and revenues? What makes sense? Some people would have us track everything down to the smallest detail. The problem with that is that it really doesn't make sense necessarily to do that. And Eric already at the level that we spend, and he'll talk a little bit about the account restructuring that we did, but it's trying to streamline everything because if you have a building, for example, that budgeted $1,000 for the materials and supplies and then instead they decide they want professional development, we have to do a budget transfer every time that happens. And so we really, you know, kind of encourage people to be thoughtful in terms of their budgeting, but also, you know, we try to just do what makes sense in terms of what level of detail we go to. But again, we reassess it every year. If there are things that we're tracking that they no longer make sense or we don't seem to ever use, we might not do that so much, or we might start tracking something that we wouldn't otherwise. I think, at least for my part right now, that's it. Unless you have any questions rolling in, I'm gonna go ahead and have Eric jump in and talk a little bit about the account restructuring that he's worked on along with the budget process and the budget document. Go ahead.
Thank you, Scott, and good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to speak to you about just the budget overall and specifically as we get into the account restructuring. Scott, I don't know if you still have the presentation up? Okay, very good. The, so with the account restructuring, you know, we wanted to make sure that we really streamlined what our financial operations really defined as it related to the accounting. And there's many, many budget units and line items that fall within the overall budget. I mean, you know, over $10,000, for example. And so we really defined these areas that you see below, listed in the presentation there, you know, so a 00, for example, is the salaries and benefits, 11 represents the building budgets, superintendent's budget, student services, ed services, and so on and so forth. You know, I could give you all those, you know, respective budget areas, but the intent was to provide clearer definition to what all of those respective areas were. And we have linked there, that account restructure is actually a link to a presentation that I had done for the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, which is just a few brief slides that talks about, you know, some consideration for folks, you know, when looking to do an account restructuring, maybe some pros and cons that go along with that, and so on and so forth. And for our district, you know, what that initially meant was having a conversation with all of the buildings and departments to understand where the areas of budget responsibility fell. And sometimes we ran into some issues where there were some gray areas and we wanted to help define who was really responsible for each respective area so that nothing was overlooked. And so it was a good opportunity to have that dialogue with budget leaders and we defined those budget areas that are shown in the presentation. And some of the benefits that have resulted from the accounting restructure, one is that we removed roughly about 7,000 budget lines, just things that weren't being used or just naturally fell out of place when defining those areas. It eliminated confusion surrounding some of those gray areas by defining the areas of responsibility. The accounting structure, it's certainly more coherent, relevant, and current. And we're able to streamline financial reporting, so you now, you know, have the monthly financial report that is relatively new, so it's a bit easier to process that and provide that resource each month. And then even important, we're able to address issues promptly and efficiently as they come up. So Scott, back to the presentation under the next slide, please. So part of the budget process is outlined there. We look to get all of the budget leaders involved and so that's including your building principals and their respective administrative assistants, as well as the department leaders and their respective administrative assistants. And we'll show you here in a second, just an example, but the intent was to provide them with a resource of their budget, kind of a blank template, if you will, that they can work together amongst their department or building and complete that. And as a finance department, we work with them to address any questions that they might have and essentially be a guiding resource as they go through the process. Essentially those, the allocations they then budget into the respective line items of their choosing because they understand and know the goals and initiatives that they're looking to accomplish via their budget. And those are provided then back to the finance department. And sometimes we have requests seeking beyond that, maybe for a variety of reasons, and so that's evaluated by the superintendent and treasurer. And ultimately, when it gets compiled, you know, we get to the point to where we are today where we can provide the Board of Education and stakeholders with a resource and ultimately ask for board approval as we move into the next fiscal year. Next tab. So then here we have the budget document itself. I certainly won't belabor the entire document, but I do want to just reiterate that it is a resource that, again, in all essence of transparency, the Board of Education now has at their disposal, but also, you know, internal and external stakeholders. Now, we understand that, you know, budgets are fluid and they do have the opportunity to change as, you know, different initiatives come up. I mean, we all understand, you know, even just a short while ago with the pandemic, the need to be able to pivot and move in a different direction at times. And so this document, this resource, is ultimately the culmination of a lot of hard work and collaboration from all of the respective district budget leaders. It's a 65-page document that highlights the budget development process timeline and it also provides the budget approach and philosophy, management of the budget process, as well as some applicable board policies and Ohio Revised Code that, you know, are outlining details related to the budget process. And then ultimately thereafter, you have kind of the nuts and bolts of details of each general fund budget listed throughout. Then as we go to the next tab, just wanted to provide just a brief example here of one of the budgets, and this is Garrity Elementary School. And so when this, it would initially be provided to the respective building principal and administrative assistant without the respective budget numbers. And to simply say, hey, here's the template with your allocation of $26,460, for example. And then they would have the task of essentially allocating it to the lines of their choosing. And again, finance office is here to support as needed and they may ask about, you know, different types of expenditure history that we can look up or provide for them to help see what they may have been spending in the past, just as an example. Ultimately, again, those details are provided back to the finance department. They're compiled within the general fund budget in its entirety and then ultimately all of those are intended to tie back not only to the five-year forecast, but specifically as well to next year's temporary appropriations, which is where we are today. So Scott, I kick it back to you.
All right, thanks, Eric. So I just am not smart enough here to figure out how to get myself off mute without stopping the entire thing, so, sorry about that. So what we have done next here in the presentation is to show the forecast. Because if you would look at the, if you look at the budget document, and I gave you all a hard copy, and again, this is out online for anyone to look at, but the very last page of that, the very back last page, you're gonna see the, all of this is general fund, all this is general fund budget, the total $119,952,504. So you'll see that number and that's the number that we want to show you, you know, repeat again in the five-year forecast and then also in the appropriations that we're gonna ask you to approve tonight. We do have the forecast, the five-year forecast here. We have your financial statements for your approval tonight as well. Really unless there were specific questions from looking at those, there's nothing new and in particular in the five-year forecast, the only change that you're gonna see and I'll show you here right now, is that we tweaked just a little bit with, because we had a little better data. Under fiscal year '22, the target savings, we have a more specific number there as it sits right now. That's really the only change from the previous forecast. Otherwise, the five-year forecast is more or less as it was before and now we're expecting some big changes. And I know a lot of you have been tracking, you know, what's happening at the state. And in fact, maybe I'll take just a hot minute right now to switch gears and speak briefly while we're talking about that. To the legal document that I gave everyone tonight, this is a simulation that was provided by OSBA and OASBO and BASSA in terms of what um, by OSBA and OASBO and BASSA in terms of what, um, what came out of conference committee was pretty much the House version of the Fair School Funding Plan. And this is the simulation that suggests how much we might see. This is going to change, you know, to some degree, but at least this can give you kind of an estimate and answer some questions. So I've, I've shaded our district. You'll see in the first column, you know, that's, uh, that's 7.6 million roughly. That's what we're receiving from the state net of all the deductions of the Ed Choice voucher deductions, Autism Peterson Scholarship deductions, Community and Charter School deductions. So that's kind of a baseline number that they're using when they draw some of these comparisons. The second, uh, column shows at the end of it all, if we were fully funded with the Fair School Funding Plan, how much money would we receive? It's 18 million and 18 and a half million, 18, 472 566. That would be year six.
That would be after six years of phasing in this plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, you know, a lot of people looked at this number and said, hooey, you know, look at that. You're going to get 18 and a half million dollars. Well, assuming two more biennial budgets, you know, past this, uh, if we get to where we, you know, we hope we'll be, that's, that's where we'll be in year six.
And just if I may, my understanding is that year one is the, the initial plan was to fund that to the tune of 13%.
Yes.
Right? And then year two was to fund it to the, to the, an additional 37%.
Correct.
So the, the 18 million dollars is not expected. We're, we're really not expect, that's, that's if it were fully funded next year, but we know it's only funded to 13% of that.
Right. And you do see the, the estimates there. Um, so the third column shows the difference between the first two columns. But if you look at the fourth column in, that's the expectation for what we will receive in fiscal 22, this upcoming school year, 9 million 532 645.
And is this with the budget that was just finally?
Correct.
Agreed upon between both houses?
These are some early estimates, so maybe not necessarily.
Cause we don't know that we've got more than that first year of the phase in. I mean, because the budget they just passed doesn't have the six-year plan.
No. So what, well, what it does have is it doesn't guarantee anything past the first two years.
Right.
So, but they have gone with what the House suggested. And so this is what they're, they're telling us we, we may see, which is the, the 9.5 million in fiscal 22. And then that will bump up to 10.8 million in fiscal 23. So you see, then again, this is the, 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 the two columns are the changes from column, the first column of what we're currently receiving to the estimate in 22, and then the first column to the estimate in 23. So 1, 1 million 951 905 more, uh, next year, and then an additional 1.2, 1 million 292 the following year. They throw the ESER money in there because they want districts to know that, even though this isn't maybe what we wanted or what we thought we should get in year one or year two, that we have ESER money to use to fill any gaps. Um, in particular, you know, a lot of, when the House even came up with their version, they were talking about, uh, the fact that, um, DPIA, the Disadvantaged Pupil Impact Aid, might not, um, be in its current form in the new funding formula or not be able to at least, maybe not be able to fund it to the level they would like to in year one. So what they're suggesting is, but you have ESER money that you can.
But ESER money has specific uses?
Yes and no. Um, it, it, it does have some requirements, but also that's the, the one, um, pot of money that you can supplant with. So it's, it's, there's this catchall in the ESER money that says continuity of services. So that's one of those things where you can, you know, say during the pandemic, we were required to do this, we offered this, we've done this. Now, there are some requirements, like for ESER 3, 20% of that must be spent on remediation. And, you know, for example, the summer school programs that we have, um, that's, that's the intention there and to keep that going. But there's a whole, there's a whole plan that needs to be developed for the ESER money, but what they're, why they throw that on this sheet in the simulation is to suggest, look, you have this money as well, uh, it's kind of a stopgap. And also the thing to remember is that student wellness and success money isn't a separate pot of money anymore. You know, we used to have to keep it, take it out of the five-year forecast, put it in a separate fund. And then we put staff out of the five-year forecast into a separate fund. So like all, the majority of the social workers, we would pay for student wellness, out of student wellness and success funds, Fund 467. Well, now there is no, unless the governor does something with the line item veto, uh, there, there are no student, specific student wellness and success funds. They're embedded in the base, uh, allocation that we get. There are still restrictions, though. They still want you to spend some of your base aid in that same way or for those same things. And so you still have to track it and report it. But the point being that when we, we see that we're going to get 9.5 million dollars next year, what that also means is that 1.2 million dollars of student wellness and success costs that we had somewhere else now comes back into the general fund here as well. So, so for our district, if this all plays out the way we're looking at it right now, not a whole lot more money next year necessarily. Um, the next year, you know, it'll be another 1.3 million dollars more than the year before. And then it will build hopefully over six years to get to the 18.4.
Good question. Um, how would the, uh, Ed Choice deduct voucher mechanism work if the governor does sign that? Will that be reflected in a change in the five-year forecast?
It will. So good, uh, good point on that. So yes, the, everything that we see unless the governor does something else would suggest that they're going to direct fund the vouchers, the Ed Choice vouchers and the community school deductions and charter deductions and the Autism Peterson scholarships. Everything is going to be direct funded from the state. So the next forecast, that's one of the reasons I say you're going to see a drastic change in the forecast because that whole deduct, right now, if you were to look at it and you look at, we're getting 20 million dollars in revenue, but we're losing, you know, 13 million dollars in these deducts. And so the net 7 million dollars that you really don't see or doesn't jump out at you is just going to show as a 7 million dollars, well, in this case it would be, if we add plus a nine and a half, of revenue, no deduct. So the deducts are going to come out of the five-year forecast. Now, the question was asked, um, you know, Dan and I had a conversation earlier about this. You know, the, what they're putting out there is a little confusing, but the state is saying, um, you know, there is no deduct. But what's also happening is that the funding for those, the direct funding from the state is in the same, uh, line item at the state level as the funding for traditional schools. So one could argue that even though the state is directly paying these other entities, they're paying them with the money that, or they not, would be money that would be, you know, in the same line item for traditional school, public school districts. So again, we're not seeing a direct deduct, um, but we're also, you know, the state is, is funding these. And it's, it's less money that would be otherwise available for the public schools in a larger sense.
But it will allow us to be able to budget better.
It will, absolutely.
I mean, at least we'll know. I mean, one of my greatest frustrations with the vouchers, especially when they were talking about the rolling, you know, open enrollment, it did not allow us to be able to plan at all because you had no idea how many you were going to get.
Agreed. And the fact that those vouchers, uh, numbers have increased. So now it's 7,500 if you're a high school student and it's 5,500. Um, if you're K8, where it used to be 4650 or, or 6,000. And now it's, it's, it's much higher. So fortunately, yes, the, the system is, doesn't work the way it did before. Otherwise, we'd be paying more or be having more money deducted from, you know, what, what little bit of state funding we're getting.
I have a question, Scott, um, just to clarify. So does 7.5 million for fiscal 21, would that go into our budget for this year?
No, what, yeah, that was what we had for the school year that just ended. So we received that amount of money in state funding for the school year that just finished. So then next year, the one that's, that's starting fiscal 22, the 2122 school year, they're thinking we're going to get this 9 million 532 645.
Thank you.
So it, it's worth just pointing out as for, for folks, you know, there are so many weeds for us to part in order to get through state funding in Ohio. That it's, it's very hard. You know, I mean, my head was swimming today and it, it will be swimming for a few days more. But, um, a couple of things that I, I really think are worth saying again. Yes, the state of Ohio is going to fund vouchers directly. No, that does not mean that the 10 million dollars that we've been losing to vouchers will appear in our spendable budget.
Correct.
Correct.
Very important thing for us to clarify. Also, I really want to point out that this does not touch the constitutionality of vouchers in Ohio. That, that no matter how you cut it, no matter which budget column vouchers are paid for, it's still, in my and many others', uh, belief, is a clear violation of Ohio's constitutional requirement of the legislature to create a thorough and efficient mechanism to fund public schools. And it is inefficient because it is reducing the amount of funds going into Ohio's public schools. A great example is that fiscal 21, 20% of, of the funds dedicated to education in Ohio went to private schools. 20%. Private schools in Ohio only educate 10% of the school-aged children. That means that for fiscal 21, 90% of Ohio's schoolchildren were educated with only 80% of the funds. No one, including the Ohio Supreme Court, for all those listening, I can imagine that no one can say that that is an efficient mechanism for funding public schools.
Well, I have an issue also in that, um, this is public money that is going to private entities that do not have to follow a lot of the same rules that we have to follow, particularly around transparency. It's going to entities where you cannot elect or choose not to elect certain people that, you know, to manage this, and they don't have to, um, comply with public records requests. And those are all concerns that I have, and those are the concerns that I tried to get into the, um, OSBA legislative platform last year. And most of those did get in at least as far as what OSBA is going to support and not support. But, um, that's one of my greatest frustrations is I feel like if, you know, if, if private entities are going to take public money, that they should have to be, uh, subject to the same requirements just because for transparency, um, reasons.
Yeah. Well, there's, there's accountability for spending public money for private use. And there's the academic accountability because those students are not, um, required to sit the same tests as public school students. And then there's the never-ending problem of the separation of church and state because public money is being used to fund religious education. So, you know, these numbers are an improvement, but they're still not correct. They're not the right approach yet. So we continue our efforts in Columbus to lobby the legislators to do the right thing.
I agree.
Eric, I would like to personally thank you for the revamped, um, financial documents we see. The, the redesign is so much easier on my eyes, my aging eyes. Um, and it makes it so much easier for me to really understand what's going on. So thank you.
I will, I will second. Um, okay. So let me, sorry, I didn't want to, didn't mean to get us off there, but just because that was one of the things that, um, I, I know there were a lot of questions about. Wanted to go there and talk a little bit about that. But I'm back to the, the forecast which we have here. Um, so again, you'll remember that the number that we have in the budget document is the 119 million 952 504. Well, if you look at the five-year forecast for fiscal 22, um, the total expenditures, and then if you take these cuts, uh, target savings of 1 million 296 930. If you look down here, I, where I have the, the sum of those, it's 119 million 952 504. So the budget document lines up to, uh, the forecast that we're asking for your approval tonight. And then, um, the last piece of the puzzle here is that you approve the appropriations at the fund level. These are temporary, um, so we'll begin the year with temporary appropriations. We'll bring permanent ones back to you, uh, in the fall. But they, uh, we don't expect that they'll change, uh, you know, significantly from what you're looking at here. But the fund level, uh, temporary appropriations, we have a link here. This is also, um, out in a PDF under Board Docs. But this is the document that we're asking for your approval, uh, of tonight. And you'll see for the general fund, 119 million 952 504 again there. So budget document ties to five-year forecast, ties to the appropriations that we're asking for in terms of the general fund. And then we also have appropriations for all the other funds, um, that we have here, uh, you know, from any of the state and federal grants, you know, Fund 200 is our, um, you know, for student activities, um, O24, which is where, you know, our self-insurance fund, where we charge all the benefit costs. So these are the, the, again, the legal authority to spend limits that we're asking, um, again, tonight for your, uh, approval of. And I think, uh, in terms of the actual presentation we have for you, that is it. We'll open it up if there are any, uh, questions about any specific documents or any, uh, feedback that you have. Again, this is, uh, as Eric mentioned, it's a, um, you know, it continues to evolve. Um, so we're trying to, again, make everything more transparent. We're trying to make sure that, you know, in, in Eric's terms, give you a peek under the hood here to see, okay, that big 119 million dollar general fund budget, what makes that up? What are all the numbers that, uh, are underneath that?
So Scott, you're going to ask us to approve the five-year forecast tonight. You said there's going to be some changes. When is the next time we send it down to Columbus? Is that in October? I know we do it twice a year.
The actual, uh, although you can do it anytime, uh, then they've changed that to November. So November will be the next time that the actual forecast will go down to Ohio Department of Education.
Okay. So a lot of the changes that we're talking about, we should be seeing reflected in that document before, you know?
Absolutely. Well, and the fact that you all approve it on a monthly basis, you know, I, I think as, as we come to know anything and everything, we'll embed that each month. And so you'll, you'll hopefully see over the course of months. And then by, yes, I would say by November, you're going to know, um, you know, pretty firmly what the, what the picture looks like for the next five years.
Okay.
Or at least for the next one year, you know, five years it gets a little.
As these, as these changes are implemented, it's going to become harder to compare before and after. So I think it's going to be important to have lots of asterisks and notes places to remind us that, you know, the column for fiscal year 20 was under these circumstances, and for 22, it's under a different set of circumstances, especially with student, um, health and wellness funds moving around in and out. And we're going to need a visual reminder so that we don't, you know, tie our heads in knots every time we look at it.
No, that's, that's a good point. And, and one of the things that I think we, um, will want to do also, I mean, the ESER money is going to make things look a little strange for the next few years as well. And, and as things get charged to that or, you know, charged back to the general fund from that. Uh, so yeah, there are a lot of things that are going to happen, um, over the next few years that are, even the, even the, as Eric mentioned, the pandemic expenditures. Um, you know, if you were to look at this, and, and this is where it's going to get a little crazy because I think the week of July 13th, um, I have calls set up with both Moody's and Standard and Poor's to talk about our five-year forecast for bond reading. And they're just looking at it on its face and they're, they're asking some of these questions already. They're like, why am I seeing this and why does this year look different than this year? And so it's really trying to, to, yes, describe what those changes are each year. And there's a lot. There are a lot of things going on with that for sure.
Yeah. I'm really concerned about the ESER money, um, making it look like we have more we can spend than we really do. That is one-time money. And I, I really want to urge us to be careful that we don't permanently change our cost structure in any way because that's one-time money.
I agree.
And we can't count on that to continue to be coming in. And that makes me very, very nervous.
I agree.
I agree.
And what's up? Some of that will connect to the upcoming presentation when we look at the data, some of the ways we're thinking about supports for students based on academic data.
Yeah, I would really like us to use that money in helping get our kids caught back up from where they are. I mean, looking at the, you know, reading the board packet before the meeting, I'm very concerned about our student achievement and getting that back where, you know, we were on a good path before the pandemic. We weren't there yet, but we were on the right trajectory. And the pandemic has really moved us off that trajectory, and we need to get back to that. And that's what that money needs to be used for. And I'm, I'm just concerned because I'm, I hear rumblings of, you know, people thinking that, oh, that's going to solve all of our problems. It's not. It's one-time money for specific purposes to help students get back to the trajectory they need to be on.
And the best thing we can do with that ESAR money is improve our student outcomes. I mean, that's the whole point, right?
Absolutely.
So, okay.
Okay, well, I, I thank everyone for, you know, and again, if you have any feedback or as you look through the budget document, if there are things, you know, as Eric said, and I, again, I want to thank him for all the work because he just, there's a ton that went into this. And it's, it's really very slick, the way that, you know, the, the individual budget managers' allocations when they, when they, when they prepare that, and he made it as easy for them to do as possible. And then it feeds up into the master document and all the work that went into that. Really good. So, you know, again, thanks, Eric, for doing that. And as, if you have any feedback, any suggestions, any information, or any questions, you know, feel free to reach out to either one of us, and we'll be happy to to talk to you about as much of the detail as you like.
I actually have one, one minor addition perhaps that you could consider. And that is in each of the school reports, which I think are, are great. I'm not going to pretend to understand each one of the line items, but from a thousand-foot perspective, one data point that would be, I think, important for us to have, I just did it, is a building-level budget dollars per pupil. And I think that that will really help us have a quick look in terms of equity. How much are, you know, how much are we budgeting per pupil at each building? It won't tell the whole story because some programs that are, that take place at individual schools just cost different amounts. But I think it's a, it's a good thing to us to have just present in front of us.
No, agreed. And actually, the, you know, the, the allocation that's given, those building-level, building budgets, both at the elementary level, then at the middle school level, and at the high school, it's a different amount per pupil. Eric, I, you know, do you know those off the top of your head?
Hard figure. They may be around maybe 90, 95 at the elementary level per pupil, maybe 115, give or take, at the middle school level, and maybe around 150 at the high school level. So again, $150 per pupil. But I can absolutely follow up and give you the, the hard figures. And we, we are very cognizant of that, you know, equity component, you know, as we derive the budget together as a whole.
Actually, I'm not necessarily, maybe others are, would like it. I just think for future, it would be a nice thing to add, just on each page, you know, each school page.
Absolutely. That makes perfect sense. And as Eric said, we have those, those standard numbers. And then we took a snapshot of the enrollment at each of those buildings, and that's how they got their allocation to begin with. Noted, and we will use that moving forward.
And I would just want to thank Scott and Eric for, you know, improving and continuing to enhance and refine the way you present materials to us. And, you know, to keep improving the transparency, it's great. So thank you for all your hard work. I, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So now I need to entertain two motions for vote. The first one will be to accept the financial reports. And the second one will be to accept the request for temporary appropriations for next year. So may I have a motion to accept the financial reports for April and May 2021?
I motion to accept the financial report.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
And now the second one. May I entertain a motion to accept the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2022?
I motion to accept the temporary appropriations for fiscal year '22.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next.
Our next topic for our work session is a presentation of our end-of-year data. Just to remind our board members, we did have a mid-year data session. I believe that was February. And so returning back to report on some key academic measures from this fiscal school year directly does connect to the discussion about ESAR funds and the needs to address some of the academic challenges that our students have experienced this, this year due to the pandemic. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Gould and her team to take us through the data presentation.
Thank you again, Superintendent Kirby and our board. We want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to share with you semester two end-of-the-year academic updates. You will hear from myself and both the directors from the Ed Services team, Ms. Allison Burr, Director of Data Research and Assessment, and Mr. Robert Swaggart, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. As with all of our presentations, we begin with our five-year strategic plan. And we know that it is our mission to have our students be engaged in challenging education. It is the responsibility of all of us as individuals. And in order to provide that challenging and engaging education, we have to look at our student outcomes to see if our students are truly advancing and seeing proficiency and mastery. So our goal for our presentation for this evening is that we are going to take an opportunity to look at some of our student outcomes. We are going to look for those initial signs of really how the pandemic is affecting our particular outcomes. There are several data points that we will point out this evening. We will be looking at quarter four learning. I want to make sure that I reiterate that we are going to look at quarter four learning and the education delivery models that we were engaged in during that learning. We are going to look at attendance in several areas. We definitely want to look at literacy and how it is measured using a cadence and NWEA map as well as grades three through 10. We are going to look at some grades that were issued in the, in the final marking period and how those were worked out through our schools in an action planning process. And then we'll talk a little bit about district and monitoring and the next steps. And so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Allison Burr.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Is my sound okay? Awesome. Thank you very much. So when we spoke with you in February, we shared the Data Insights Report that was published by the Ohio Department of Education. And in that report, they highlighted multiple data points that they were following and that we were following as well. So we thought appropriate to include some of this information in tonight's update. So that's why you're going to receive information about our education delivery models. Here in CAGUH, we refer to them as our learning models. And I highlight student attendance and then some assessment information. So before we get into the notes and bolts of our results, this slide is included just as a reference point. Many of the data pieces that you're going to be shown are disaggregated by student race and ethnicity along with disability status. So in some of the graphics, you'll see SWD, which stands for Students with Disabilities. And then you will also see EL, yes or no. And so the EL represents English learners. So again, this chart is for your reference just to give you some idea of the number of students in each one of those groups. And this is based on fourth-quarter enrollment prepared by our registration department. All right, so quarter four learning models. So the top table was published by the Ohio Department of Education. And it gives us an idea of the percentage of traditional public school districts across the state of Ohio and what educational model they were offering as of April. And we can see the charting tells us that about 85% of public districts, Cleveland Heights, University Heights included, offered a five-day in-person option for families. Then the state shows that about 78% of students were participating in that five-day model. The table on the bottom, you see a breakdown that's specific to Heights students. And for the elementary and middle school level, the most highly selected learning model for the fourth quarter was full in-person. Thought it was interesting across the high school where we saw that more families or more students selected that my school online option. So now we're going to take a look at attendance, and we're going to look at two different data points related to attendance. One is the attendance rate. And the second is percentage of students who are chronically absent. Now, for that chronic absenteeism rate, that represents students who miss 10% or more of their scheduled school time. And it's important to note that that time could be excused or unexcused. I think this confuses some of our, our families because they don't recognize that things like medical illness or vacations or taking time out for maybe even college visits. While these are understandable reasons for missing school, they can still negatively impact a student's attendance record. So enrolling in student attendance, the Ohio Department of Education has not yet shared any information about attendance rates, so I can't give you anything from the state of Ohio. However, it is a component, or it is something that's reported in each school and district's state report card. So I do expect to have some information in the fall once those report cards are released. So right now, you just have Cleveland Heights University Heights. And this particular slide shows you attendance rates from the first day of school through the last day of school for students. And then you'll notice the 2019-2020 school year is lightly grayed out. And that is because of the statewide school closure that happened starting March 16, 2020. So as the Ohio Department of Education gave guidance indicating that we could report, should report students as being present from March 16 through the last day of school. And so what happens when we're looking at things like attendance rate or anything related to attendance that does have a positive impact on those rates? So I've included attendance rates, and you'll also see chronic absenteeism rates for prior school years because that would be a more comparable or a more similar comparison due to the school closure last year. Now, for chronic absenteeism, we do have limited information from the Ohio Department of Education. They did release some initial findings from their Proving Ground Partner districts. This is a group of, I believe there's 10 districts across the state in both urban and rural environments who have been working with the Department of Education, Attendance Works, which is a research organization, and even the Cleveland Browns to improve student attendance. And so the table that you see here is a charting from, again, those Proving Ground Partner districts where we can see that the, all three levels, elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level were impacted or saw an increase in the percentage of students who are chronically absent. But interestingly, for these districts, the elementary level was the one that was most greatly impacted. Same information, looking at it by typology or area. So we can see urban districts, urban, proving ground districts on the left-hand side with the lighter blue color or lightest blue color representing absenteeism rates for the 2021 school year. And again, we see an increase for both urban and rural districts, but it seems to have hit the urban districts a little bit harder than the rural districts. And here, we're looking at it by student's race or ethnicity. And again, we see an increase in the percentage of students who are chronically absent across the student groups. And most significant or those most impacted are African-American and Black students. So now looking at Cleveland Heights University Heights, when we look at our chronic absenteeism rates by level. Interesting, when you compare the 2018-2019 school year to, to this year, 2021, the, the change is relatively similar. So we don't see as great a change at the elementary level as they did in Proving Ground districts. We do see a more significant difference in 1920 to 2021. But again, part of that was because of the way that students were reported during the closure. Same information, disaggregating by race. We again see that chronic absenteeism increased across all of the racial or ethnic groups. And then here, when we're looking at absenteeism rates by disability status and English learner status, we can see that the rates for students with disabilities are higher than those of their non-identified peers. However, for English learners, their absenteeism rates have actually gone down compared to what we would call, you know, the typical school year of 1718 and 1819. And before you raise the question, no, I have not dug down a little bit deeper to find out, you know, what that's connected to. But my, my curiosity is related to the, the learning model that maybe those families selected to see if that had anything to do with it. But I haven't had the chance to drill down to see if I can identify a cause or a trend in that. So that closes the attendance or our non-academic data point. Now we're going to transition into literacy, so from kindergarten through high school. In the, so we're going to do that using two different data points. The first will be Acadience Reading, which is administered again in early grades, kindergarten through third grade. And then NWEA MAP, which is administered to students beginning in grade three. So here's some background information on Acadience. Again, it's an assessment of early literacy skills administered to our young kiddos. It is used to determine their reading status. And the beginning-of-the-year reading status is actually one of the measures on the Ohio State Report Card. It's typically administered face-to-face, but with us being in a fully remote environment for the start of the school year, the beginning-of-the-year administration was conducted fully remote for 100% of the students. The end-of-the-year administration, in contrast, was both remote and face-to-face depending on whether or not the student was in person or not. And then for grade three, so the, the timing of the end-of-the-year test, this happens in May. And that is just after Ohio State testing in the same time as the MAP testing. So we do not require our grade-three students to also then participate in Acadience testing. So for this comparison, I've chosen not to include grade three because it's not fully representative of the grade level. So you'll see comparisons from beginning of the year, end of the year, for kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And then you have just the number of students who were assessed in And then you have just the number of students who were assessed in both of those administrations. Here we have, this was shared in the February presentation, but it's just a reminder from a report included in the Department of Ed's Data Insights. So one of the findings from Amplify, which is a vendor that districts can use to administer the Acadians test or the DIBL's test, saw the greatest decrease in percentage of students on track in grade one, and they felt that that was related to the performance in phonemic awareness, which is critical to to learning how to read, stability, to identify, hear and break down sounds. And we saw similar results in our performance. So as you orient your your eyes to the charting along the horizontal axis, you see the grade level. So K is kindergarten and then first grade, second grade, and there's a summary for all of the students. The lighter purple or lavender color there represents the percentage of students who are on track at the start of the school year for that beginning of the year testing. And then the darker purple represents the number of students or percentage of students on track based on the end of the year testing. So for both good and alerting reasons, my eyes are drawn to kindergarten performance where we can see this like are coming in. Seven-four percent of our students were on track for reading and then we see the dip at the end of the year. And yes, did look at those results a little bit more closely and we can see that drop in performance was related to students scoring in the area of phonics segmentation. So again, our kiddos are experiencing what the researchers showed us at the beginning of the year with our first graders and that, working on that skill to break down and hear sounds. On a happier note, we do see an uptick in the percentage of students in grade one who are on track, so that is good news given that they were so far behind compared to the performance over earlier years. Same information, except this time we're disaggregating it by race. And we can see that while the performance for beginning of the year and the end of the year were similar for the respective groups, that gap in performance between students of color and their white peers is still, still evident. And then looking at, again, performance by disability status and English learner status, we do see again a difference between students with disabilities compared to their non-identified peers and English learner students and those for whom English is their first language. So that's a look at grades K one and two, and now we'll look at MAP performance for grades three through high school. So MAP is a universal screener that we administer two to three times per year in grades three through eight, and at the high school, it is administered to students based on their courses. So students enrolled in Algebra One, Geometry, English One, English Two will take the MAP test. And again, the three times per year is in the fall, which is typically September. The winter administration, which occurs in January, and then in spring, which occurs in in May. There are a variety of question types, so students will see what we call technically enhanced items, multiple choice. So that's very helpful when we're thinking about what students are seeing compared to they see, what they see on high-stakes tests like the Ohio State exams. The test is untimed, but it typically takes students about an hour to finish, though we did see an increase in the average time when students took the test in the remote setting this fall. Some other highlights for MAP, scoring is immediate. So both students and staff are able to access students' scores right after they test. The questions are aligned to Ohio's state standards, which is what helps them predict performance on not only the Ohio State test, but also college readiness tests such as the ACT and the SAT. And then the two biggest pieces or reasons that we use it, the test is nationally normed, which helps us put our results into context. And it measures both current achievement and growth over time. So for the purposes of the visualizations today, we are using students' median percentiles. And these are organized by grade level. And that the median value is just the number in the middle when you rank order performance from lowest to highest. And again, when we're thinking about making sense of the values, we're putting in the context, the fiftieth percentile represents typical performance or typical achievement at a given time. And we're going to be looking at results from the twenty nineteen, twenty school year, so last school year and this school year. The table on the right, again, just helps with the descriptions. You'll see a lot of numbers, but it's just a way to describe performance so we know whether or not we're looking at is is good, bad or indifferent. So to begin, this is looking at the achievement levels for students in grades three, four and five, so we see the grade level along the horizontal axis. And then each test administration, so a test administered during the nineteen twenty school year of that bluish color. And then again, we need to note that we have a fall administration in nineteen twenty, we had a winter administration. And then the school closure prevented us from having a spring administration. So that's why you don't see a spring nineteen twenty bar there. And then for the twenty twenty-one school year, we did have students participate in each administration, fall, winter and spring. For and for each administration, the test was offered remotely or in person. So again, we're looking at elementary performance. I would describe the performance for both the last school year and the school year in the about-average range. And one of the benefits of looking or using MAP is that we're able to see growth between administrations. So the blue again represents last school year and then those of an orange color represent growth for this school year. And while it's in the legend, you see a winter to spring for nineteen twenty and a fall to spring for nineteen twenty because we didn't have that spring administration. That's why you don't see the the bars for for those time periods. Again, looking at grades three through five in the area of reading, the growth percentiles from last year, so just looking at the improvement from fall to winter, that performance would be described as slightly above or above-average performance. And then in twenty twenty-one, they were all relatively around that slightly below-average performance. Next is the middle schools. So again, we've got grades six, seven and eight. And I would describe again the achievement percentiles here as being slightly below or about average. So in the sixth grade, you see the thirty-fifth percentile, the thirty-eighth percentile, making it slightly below. But then for the winter administration and then seventh and eighth grade, they are about average. For growth, and I've talked to the middle school principals about this, they were really disappointed. I mean, we all were, but you know, they saw such what they thought was such strong growth during that nineteen twenty school year, they're really looking forward to seeing how kids were progressing. Their growth percentiles for the nineteen twenty school year were slightly above average. And then when you compare that to this school year, we see it range from moderately below to above average depending on the grade. And then finally, we see here at the high school, again, students in grades nine and ten are typically tested because of their, the courses that they are involved in. And both last year and this year, achievement was around the above-average range. Last year for growth, again, both students in ninth and tenth grade saw about-average growth. And then for this year, we can see it ranged from slightly below to about average. And you can see, it looks like the closure impacted the ninth-grade students more so than the tenth graders. The final data point that we are going to share tonight are grades issued, again, because that was a component that you saw in February. Just have a few more slides for that. The first one here is for elementary grades. And our families know we were on an adjusted reporting schedule for the elementary level this year. In the last few years, the elementaries have reported on the trimester, which would be every twelve weeks. But this year, it was adjusted, so the report card grades were issued every eighteen weeks. So that's why you see the T two and T four, so two times this year. And then there were two types of scores or grades that were shared. Every student kindergarten through fifth grade should have received an indication related to progressing toward promotion. And so we can see an increase that's under in this first set of columns here. For yes, so we see from the first reporting period that occurred in January, like eighty-two percent of students being identified as progressing toward promotion, and then that went up to ninety-four percent of students, again, K to twelve. And then you see grades displayed in either an A, B or C or D or F in the area of writing and in reading. So our third, fourth and fifth grade students all receive a letter grade for reading, but then only fourth and fifth graders receive one in writing. And our elementary families are aware, but I'll just make sure I indicate for the full viewing audience that at the elementary level, we do have a standards-based report card. So there's a lot of information and comments that are shared with families about student performance by way of the specific standards that students are, are learning. So again, we see see an uptick at the elementary level in the percentage of students progressing towards promotion. And we see an increase in those receiving an A, B or C compared to the first reporting period. For the secondary level, so this would include the middle schools, option students and Heights High students. Grades are issued every nine weeks by the quarter, so that's why you see Q one, Q two, Q three and Q four at the bottom of the charts. Excuse me, again, the table represents or the charting represents the number of grades issued in an English or language arts course. And just like the elementary school, you can see an increase in the number and percentage of students who earned an A, B or C during that fourth quarter reporting period. So my colleagues are going to go a little bit more in-depth into next steps. But I do just want to highlight, one of the steps is to continue to communicate performance results to students and families. The weeks, we are actually getting Ohio State test results from this past spring in. So families will receive notices in the in the mail once we get those letters from the department. For our English learners, their proficiency skills are results are in, so again, that'll be another mailing that's going home. We had a great turnout for grade two, Terranova and Inview testing that occurred this spring. Those results will be mailed shortly along with advanced placement results. The AP exam results are coming out a little bit later than they typically do. The last round of results, actually, I don't think they will be in until August sixteenth. So families can expect to receive those results. The students actually have direct access to them in their advanced placement profiles. And then information will come from the schools once we have it in. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Gould and Mr. Swiger.
All right, thank you, Allison. So I just wanted to touch base on a couple of these next step items. As everyone is aware, we are currently in the midst of our summer programming. And so we will continue to use our summer programming and some of the S R funds that you know, Mr. Gainer had talked about previously in order to try and fill in some of the gaps for students. So unlike traditional summers where we might have a short program for students in order to catch back up or to receive some remediation or to receive some credit recovery, our summer program is much more robust this this summer. So we are actually working with K eight students and we have got eight weeks of scheduled intervention time planned with students. We've been pushing in with forty-five minutes of math and forty-five minutes of ELA instruction daily or as much as we can, actually. We've also been trying to balance that academic time with some STEM programming for students in grades three through five, that's really one of our focus areas right now. And we are really starting to make sure we're hitting that core or critical content that even Miss Bird tonight presented a little bit of information about where our students need some gaps and holes filled. So for some of our youngest learners, we are continuing to focus on phonics and that phonemic segmentation and awareness. We are doing that through the use of our Springboard program, which actually has started last week and we are continuing to run those lessons. Those lessons will also continue through the school year with our Title One leads, using them to try and find additional support for students that are identified with a reading monitoring plan. So we are continuing to use the data that we have to make good instructional decisions. I know we will be meeting as a curriculum team this summer in order to look at overall pacing and see if there are any additional recommendations from the state of Ohio about some critical standards that should be focused on. We actually are also working with some national organizations like GreatSchools.org who are helping us to really pinpoint some of those key critical content areas that we should focus our attention. And our message will continue to be, we are focusing on accelerating student learning when we start up in the fall. That we are not necessarily going into a remediation mode, we are going into an acceleration mode. And I try to talk to people a little bit about what does that look like? It's always if you have really high-quality instruction, then you can move learning along a little bit faster. I think about trying to teach, you know, maybe an older family member how to utilize a new smartphone. Yes, it's complicated, but at the same time, if you can really relate to them and you can help them understand some of the features that you can accelerate their use of that technology. We're going to do the same thing with our students when it comes to ELA and math. So we are focusing on that acceleration. And then the other piece, and you heard that as well, is summer programming is not just a one-time thing. We are also thinking about what enrichments and interventions and accelerations can we use during the school year? So even as we start the fall, making sure that we are ready. And then we will continue to plan for summer programming over the next two years as part of our, our, our plan to return to school. So those are just some of the initial first steps, and I know Mrs. Gould is going to follow up with some other next steps.
So as our principals have had an opportunity to sit and digest a lot of the data that they have collected over the year and to start to think about planning. Principals were engaged in a principal retreat in the month of June where they had the opportunity to review their action step planning around grades. They had the opportunity to look at all of their data over the school year as well as start to think about transition planning for the upcoming school year. And as part of that transition planning, many things came out in that planning process as well as as well as quarter four meetings. One of the things that continue to come to the forefront is more tutoring opportunities for their students within and after the school data are based on some practical research, really making sure that there is targeted tutoring to support those students based on the needs that they are seeing. Professional development is always a part of the planning, but making sure that the professional development is intentional and actually supports the academic skills that we are definitely focused on, as Mr. Swager has said, around our literacy and our math goals. As well as, as pointed out by Miss Byrd this evening, around every school having an attendance strategy to truly address that absenteeism, looking at this from a district wide about how we can be proactive in combating our chronic absentee problem that we have seen during the pandemic. We also have had each of the principals, they have identified and targeted those students who we currently know have struggled academically during this pandemic. They want to create what we call orientations and supports for those students as they transition back to the fall, because we've had some students who have been totally remote and have not been in our schools. We're going to have students who have been in our schools in a hybrid model and have not been in our school for five days. So we really have to look at what those orientations are going to look like and what supports are needed for those students who have excelled in this environment as well who need the extra support in our in-person environment that we are going back into. As well as looking at what we call explicit instruction, where we really look at what we do in that tier level instruction or what we call the universal instruction that is provided to everyone, where we look at where we are going to take something, how students will start, and intentionally look at how we help them succeed on that particular task. And we want to make sure that that is an opportunity for all of our students. So when we think about least restricted environment, we want all of our students engaged in that process so that if we excel at the universal tier, then we know that we will have less students that we will have to worry about when we think about interventions for them. So those are just some of our next steps, and we will open it up for questions.
Thank you very much for this thorough presentation. I'm struck by the chronic absenteeism numbers and I just hope that everybody can get back in the habit of attending school, whether it's in person or online. You know, certainly the spring after we first shut down, things were very difficult. And it took a while to ramp up our systems and get everybody computers and hotspots and everything. So I would hope that we can see those numbers drop significantly. It appears that the state basically saying everybody was present for the last few weeks of two thousand twenty sort of decreased absenteeism in an artificial way. It's sort of, we're looking at two different sets of numbers and it's hard to you sort of have to discount that one medium green column in the in the bar charts. That's the only thing that struck me right now. I have a lot of things to think about. Does anybody else have thoughts?
I want to clarify one thing that I heard you say about the summer camp, which I think is fantastic. I heard you say you want to do it again. Was it one additional year? So this year and one additional year or this year and two additional years?
You know, I think that our plan is a three year plan, this year being year one, we're having two additional years. I think that as we continue to plan and see how those funds can be used, you know, thinking about still having this, I think that it's a long term plan, even after our ESAR funds run out. We would still need to continue programming like this, just because I think that's what a strong city and a strong public school should be doing anyway. Hopefully, we can bring some more partners in like the city in order to have some programming for our students in the in the summertime. And there might be a cost to families in the future, but I don't think that that is something that should deter us from having a camp feel where we get academics and enrichment wrapped up for all of our students.
Love that. I mean, I think the fact that we have not had any kind of camp until this year, I think that that's a huge step forward for our community, and I think that we should try to continue that any way that we can. So I applaud you for that. I know the cities are getting some money as well, so that would be an interesting if there's a way we could partner around that. And I really was excited about the idea of whether it's tutoring or being able to utilize, you know, some additional time either before or after school, once school starts. I think our students are really, really going to need that. So thank you for thinking of adding those as well for support.
A couple of things came to my mind. First of all, I think the camp piece is is wonderful. I mean, Jody and I were in this room this past week for the middle school shorts. And Liz was here as well for the middle school shorts videos. And all of that enrichment, you just can't put a price tag on those sorts of events in terms of, because you just don't know where, how something, an experience like that's going to affect a young person, what it's going to do to change the trajectory of a young person. And I think we saw kids this past week who really may have had their trajectory changed as a result of that experience with those amazing mentors. Just remarkable if people at home want to spend a few great minutes, Heights Middle School Shorts, find it online, they're posted, they're fantastic. And another thing that struck that strikes me about the potential value of summer camps is, you know, we are a, to some degree, a district that is transient, you know, that our students kind of come and go. And I think that summer programming could really help to ease kids into familiarity with other students in their grades and that sort of thing, too. And I think that that's a really important transition and almost like an orientation for new students into the district. So I'd love to see that expanded and continued. And I really think that after school work during the year is an important piece. And it it reestablishes in my mind, whenever we talk about after school work, about the incredible power of Travis Kelsey's eighty seven and running support of that late bus. You know, many of us think about extra help and participating in a club as just, well, sure, why not? But logistically, it's impossible for many of our families because the adults in the house are not available to come and pick kids up after special help or after the club meets. And so that that late bus that that Travis has provided funding for through his his foundation, eighty seven and running, is so beautiful and helpful. And then the final piece that I just did want to mention is I think that the absenteeism numbers are really important. But personally, as a parent, I'm more interested when I'm talking, when I'm looking at absenteeism, at the older numbers, because I think that they're, they may be more accurate. We had absenteeism this year, sometimes due to just a confusion around the changing models and bell schedules and things like that. And then I'll tell you, you know, my son, we were getting calls that he was absent on days he didn't have school. And we just sort of threw our hands up in the air and we're like, you know, this is just too much to chase down every day. We're not doing it. And so I'm assuming that we're no different than many other families in the district. And, you know, should, could we have been a more participatory partner with the district in keeping more better records? But we didn't. And so, but as I look back at the historic records of chronic absenteeism, I'm seeing real need and just opportunity for us to get better. So any programming that we can do to connect with those families and to get those kids in and to find out what's at the root, I think a lot of the wraparound services that we're doing could really benefit some of that as well. So thank you. That's everything that I had to say.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Or questions?
I do have, I just want to share, I'm really, as will, the team will all continue to do planning as relates to ESAR fundings and its use, and I'm definitely
Can you put your mic towards you, Liz?
Oh, you can't hear me?
Yes, just play your mic.
Oh, sorry. So we'll continue to do planning as relates to the ESAR funds. Of course, you know, there's been a lot of unknowns, because, you know, we're really waiting to see what happens with Columbus. But we'll definitely be paying attention to how do we address what is showing up in the data right now that we know is a direct result of the pandemic, knowing that we can't, you know, we have to, it's temporary funding, right? So we have to make sure that it's targeted, it addresses the issue. But we're not going to be able to add like fifty positions moving forward in, you know, in the district. And that does make it challenging, because of course, I would love if we did a free summer program for the next ten to fifteen years for our students, but we're not going to get, you know, millions and millions of dollars every year from, you know, the federal government. There are some other areas too as well, so really kind of paying attention to what are some, we, we know we have kids who have not come to school. And that's going to take some additional on the ground work, you know, with families finding out what's going on and getting those, you know, getting those supports. We know we have kids that have missed chunks of time. We'll need targeted tutoring, structured time, research, like to address that. But we won't be able to have a robust tutoring program for the next ten years probably unless the state really, you know, with with funding. So again, so there's always this this tension of addressing, you know, the needs and being true to the philosophy of the use of the ESAR funds, you know, as well. And then monitoring. But I do want to thank the team for not only putting the presentation together, but also the work around helping to support schools and teams in this work. Mrs. Gould and her team did the principal retreat. There's also all of the, the teams will be coming together in August for the building leadership retreat. We have all the building leadership leads as well. There are many principals that have teachers in planning over the summer. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of work that's been happening around the scenes to to address these, address these pieces. So thank you all.
And now, if there isn't anything else, may I have a motion?
Wait, I do have one other thing. It's not on that topic, it's on another topic. I just wanted to remind everyone that this Sunday is the University Heights Fourth of July Parade. That's taking place instead of or in lieu of the Memorial Day Parade, we're celebrating that now on Fourth of July. I should have our lineup information tomorrow. I did talk to the city today and they were, they had one meeting tonight where they were working on that, so we should know that tomorrow. I did order the stickers and temporary tattoos, which I'm donating, so that that's been done, I have those. And wear your jersey, we have our jerseys. So I will send out more information once I get the information on the lineup tomorrow. So I'm hoping that as many of us as possible can participate. And I believe we might have some kids with us, Liz, is that correct, maybe? To help us hand out stickers and tattoos. Oh, excellent. Who's that football team?
The football team, yes.
Okay, great. So when I get the lineup information, I'll get it to you, so you can get it to whoever our contact is, and it will be awesome. So we have one thousand temporary tattoos and five thousand stickers to hand out.
Will it be as hot as Memorial Day a year and a half ago?
I know, it's only supposed to be like seventy six or something, so it's supposed to be pleasant, yes. And I'm going to pick up the banner from the Board of Ed sometime this week.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
I motion, we adjourn.
I second that.
Mr. Gainer.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serena.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Night, thank you.